Let's call to order the jail district board of directors agenda for the work session Tuesday, July 1st with the board supervisor's hearing room in Melody Lane in Bisbee. Pusina ARS 38, 431.02H. The public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the board may attend either in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the board supervisors and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call. District one, District two, and District three. Anthony Norrie is here. Phil is online, correct? Is he on there? Hello? Phil, come in, Phil.
Yes, can you hear me?
There he is. There he is. All right, we got Phil here. So today, the agenda item is to discuss and provide possible direction regarding a potential site for the construction of the new Cochise County Jail. So I guess, Sharon, do you want to kick it off or should I just go to? Straight to Phil. Phil?
Okay. Chairman, can the board hear me okay?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm before I jumped in. We have a presentation that I'll provide you and make it very straightforward. Try to get any direction based on your discussion. Today, good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Phil Bordon, the project manager. The purpose of today's meeting is to provide an opportunity for the board to discuss the possible site location of a new jail. Next slide, please. So just going over a little history during the jail planning study completed in May 2025, that provided an evaluation of six sites that were identified by Cochise County. They were Benson, Sierra Vista, Douglas, Tombstone, Bisbee off of Melody Lane adjacent to the county administration complex, and the existing jail site in Bisbee. One site, Sierra Vista, was removed from consideration due to the discovery of a conservation easement that impacts the development of that site. And since there really wasn't a desire to continue in that area, we did not worry about that. But it was discovered after the preliminary draft of the study. The two highest ranked sites remaining are the existing jail site in Bisbee and the site adjacent to the county administrative complex off Melody Lane. I've also included Tombstone site since it was discussed by the board during the presentation on the draft planning study report. Sorry, presentation by Chin Planning on May 20th. So I wanted to make sure I at least followed up with that. But I have limited today's discussion at least to the top two sites. When we're looking at the existing Bisbee site, on this existing jail site, the new jail facility would be integrated into the hillside and use existing access roads, the existing access road and utilities. The advantage of this site, of course, is it has all utilities onsite already used for the jail. The only issue that came out during the review of this site was a water tank would be needed to be added just to improve fire flows for the new facility. Not uncommon when you're upgrading a facility like this. The site does provide the opportunity to reuse existing buildings such as the training center, firing range, and any other facilities that your future design team is able to incorporate into a new jail and reduce costs of the project. And when I say that, that was one of the things when we were looking at this from a planning study, Karen Chin from Chin Planning, a lot of that square footage, some of it based on if you didn't put it at this site, might be constructed on another site. So there was some facilities on this site that she identified could be reused. And as you bring a new team in, you'd also want to look at other areas of the project site to make sure if there was the ability to reuse any of the other facilities. I know it's already been looked at, but we want to make sure at least it's open to that. Then, one note on this slide that I'd like to bring up. When Chin Planning and DLR placed the recommended square footage of a facility on a site, as shown in this slide, you can see the blocking diagram. It was a generalized block diagram to show the necessary land mass for the project. And the reason I bring that up is after discussing with, you know, staff and even the board at certain points, I wanted to clarify that that isn't how it would look in the future. I mean, this was a planning study that's at, you know, 30,000 feet in the air. When you start designing this, you're going to bring on a team that's going to come out, they're going to move forward with the design, and they'll work with the county to reduce the square footage of the facilities and optimize the use of any property for that design process. So I wanted to point that out because when we were looking at this, I realized that when we show pictures, sometimes people immediately go, okay, that's where it's going to be on the site. That's how it's going to look. It's really going to change. This was just made, the planning study was to make sure you had the appropriate land for that facility. Next slide, please. Just looking at the available land on the existing jail site in Bisbee, you have two parcels that are currently owned by Cochise County. They are, they total 65 acres and encompass the existing jail and some adjacent land. The surrounding land around those highlighted areas are owned by Phelps Dodge Freeport Macaron. Just want to point out, I think we all know that you've probably worked with the mines in the past and they've been a good neighbor, but that's what you have as far as an ownership. So this has land that is currently owned by the county. No need to go through purchase, no acquisition issues. Next slide, please. Thank you. When we look at the Bisbee Melody Lane site, sorry, this is at State Route 92 and Melody Lane near the county admin complex. Utilities are available onsite and it is adjacent to the county complex, which gives it access to existing support services and other infrastructure. Next slide, please. One of the, that's why I wanted to talk about that blocking diagram. When we now look at the actual parcels, there is a parcel that is approximately 63 acres that's highlighted here that obviously, if this was a desired site, you could look at purchasing all or a portion of that parcel to place the new jail on this parcel. When you look up north of this highlighted parcel that I have on this map, there are two parcels that are at the, near the corner of State Route 92 and Melody Lane. One's another private parcel of 8.7 acres and another one is right at the corner owned by, sorry, owned by Cochise County already, and it's a one acre parcel. Didn't really see the need to bring that up as far as an acquisition. Just want to make sure you knew it's there and it's private as well as the county-owned parcel, partly because there's a sufficient amount of acreage contained within this parcel should the board wish to move forward on this piece of property. Next slide, please. So those were the two sites that were ranked the highest out of the study. And one of the discussions that came from last, I think it was May 20th, was the Tombstone area. And so I just wanted to go over the Tombstone site, which is at the, currently at State Route 80 and Davis Road. It's near the airport, the Tombstone Airport, does not have access to most utilities. In fact, telecom cable is the only utility that is in close proximity to this site. And that, everybody knows that was one of the real issues with this issue. That came up during the discussion with the board on May 20th. This would require an onsite sewer plant, develop a water system, and three mile extensions for power and gas. And this site, because of those issues, has the highest construction cost for the project. So I just wanted to bring up that, that's one of the issues associated with this site. Now, I know during the discussions with the board, there was a discussion if we could move it. Next slide, please. I just wanted to, oh, sorry, this is the ownership. Wanted to give you the ownership of it is state of Arizona. This is state land. When you're dealing with state land on acquisition, you pretty much can work with them to acquire it for a public purpose. There tends to not be an issue with that. But you do have to go through the state land process of appraising and paying for that land.
Hang on, Phil. Phil, there's another option. There's another option where the county can lease the land and the land department likes that because it's a constant revenue source. So we could do a 50-year lease for state trust land and build on it, and then we just pay a annual lease payment to the state.
I'm not disagreeing. You have that option when approaching the state land department. Sometimes they have a preferred acquisition model. Sometimes they would like you to own it. Sometimes they would like to move towards a model that provides them a revenue stream, just depending on the use. So yes, sir, Chairman, you're exactly right. When you approach state land, they're going to go through that discussion with you and you're going to bring up the options and of course, they're going to say which one they prefer. Sometimes I've found that they desire to get rid of it. They don't want to own it if it's going to be under certain conditions. But as you mentioned, that would be something we would look at if you desired to move into this area or any area of state land. I just put this last slide up partly to show because at the last discussion was where could it be that would reduce costs? And this shows kind of an overview of the Tombstone area, the incorporated area, and some of the areas that are served by the sewer plant, which is highlighted there. I think just basically, and you can see where Highway 80 and 82, of course, some of the main corridors in this area are. I think what would have to happen to really make this any type of achievable move into the Tombstone area, it would need to be located closer to available utilities and adjacent to the existing highways to be even close to the lower cost options in Bisbee. So saying that, and next slide, and I'll just sum it up. And we can go back to any slides the board wants to discuss. But I think that my parting thoughts would be this is the board in their planning study receives a fairly large cost estimate. We know we're going to need to reduce that cost. One of the biggest issues to reduce costs is to reduce the square footage of that facility, which you will do during the design process. Also, land acquisitions. Land acquisitions tend to, you know, cost money and take time. So from a standpoint of costs and trying to move your project forward, those are a couple of the issues that I tend to want to point out when you're looking and discussing some of these properties. So with that, Chairman, members of the board, I'm here to discuss or answer any questions you may have, or it's a time where, of course, in public, you get to discuss it.
My heartburn is, and I continue to look at this, and this is what drives me nuts. That's, you can't see it. It's on my phone, but that little blue dot is where we are right now. Right? And the rest of that is the county. That's my heartburn.
I don't understand.
It's a zillion miles away from my town, or as far as it can be.
It's far away from everything. I mean, we're at the southernmost end of this county, right? And you have the biggest municipality, Sierra Vista, that provides 38% of the population. Then you've got Benson, you've got Wilcox, you have basically, you know, the farther lying aspects of it. Really, the only beneficiary is Douglas and Bisbee.
Let's look forward, okay? And not in the past. This could all change. I need to say this because Douglas used to be the third largest city of all Arizona. Everything needs to come there. That's where all the big, you know, the thing is, is that we want to build the jail. We put a limit on the time in which we could do. We want it to be the most efficient and not cost taxpayers a lot of money, not have this tax, asset tax for it.
You have municipalities that are paying basically double, right? So Sierra Vista pays police taxes.
But what you're saying is if you were to move this jail somewhere else, you eventually are going to have to remove Bisbee from the county seat. It's been here since at least, I think, 1880, correct? Well, let's say 1900, but it's not, it's not, Tombstone was not in the county seat for longer than that. Okay, so then we come to the point of you're going to have to build in roads. You're going to have to build sewer. You're going to have to build electricity, water, gas, land acquisition. This is all a huge cost.
We have not really done the CBA. That's the thing. So nobody's done the cost benefit analysis. The impact of the municipalities cannot be ignored. You can't ignore that Sierra Vista has to drive all the way here, Wilcox.
You're saying they have the least amount of criminals, right?
If they went out for Charleston Road, if you look at it, we did, we did the, when we did the analysis, you're taking their drive time, their trip, total trip time from like an hour and 35 minutes down to like 42 minutes. You're almost cutting it in half.
You also have to consider that you have a corpse already here. So if you want, if you're doing
We're putting a courthouse in the jail, though, so they don't have to transport it. The judge can go, it'll be sufficient size enough to.
That's within the jail?
Yeah, in the jail. One courtroom in the jail.
For the jail. But then there are family issues too, right? Everyone, within Bisbee, you've got at least the transportation. You've got the bus.
We'll think about that, but there may be a stipend or some offset we get to.
More cost. So when you, when you want to do.
For the short term, but for the long term, the benefit is higher. Again, you brought up, don't look in the past, but now I'm looking in the future, right? So, you know, demographics change and shift all the time.
That's right. But I don't think shifting it up towards Benson or Sierra Vista is exactly the way to go either. Or Tombstone, it's going to be such a high cost when you talk, look at all the infrastructure needed. You know, if you got to build a road, it's a million dollars a mile. Can you just imagine you're talking about trying to find water, putting in sewer systems? You can't connect to Tombstones. They're so old. It's like reminding me of when I buy a new water pump into my 20-year-old car, everything else starts to fall apart. It's too much pressure on the old existing parts. So you, you know, that's going to be an added cost on the road and it might be detrimental to Tombstone. Plus, you know, just the water, the electricity, gas, then the cost of buying it. Now, you say, oh yeah, we can lease from the state. I've always found that sometimes you always get the wrong end of the deal with the state. They're not, you know, they're not your good neighbors and they're going to give you a great deal. So we're talking about, we're talking about transportation to the courts, to the lawyers, family visitation. If you're going to put it way out there in Tombstone, how are people going to be able to find a way that we don't have places? A lot of people don't have cars. Yeah?
It's more convenient for families because if you have the majority of the population, but the majority of the population coming out of Sierra Vista subsequently then Douglas, and then after that, it's Benson and Wilcox.
So they have buses.
And then Bisbee. Bisbee, what's that? What buses?
Well, that's exactly it. What buses?
No, no, no. What you're talking about is, so somebody coming from Wilcox, right, to go down to that jail is going to be almost, it takes me an hour from where I am, so another half hour. So that's an hour and a half.
So it's going to take me an hour, an hour and 15 minutes if I come from Douglas to Tombstone. Going up Davis Highway or going, I go Davis Highway, it's still an hour and 10, 15 minutes. So necessarily putting in the center of nowhere is not exactly the best situation.
It's not the center. It's at the intersection of two state highways. And it's.
The other thing, you don't have.
Charleston, Charleston Road coming straight up out of Dagno from Sierra Vista runs right into it. So you got a, you got a Dagno Road that runs from Sierra Vista straight into it. You got 82 coming across from Whitestone. You've got 80 coming down from Benson, and then you've got Sybil Road potentially for Wilcox to come down, or 191 and Gleason Road to come across from Wilcox.
You have a Copper Queen. You've got.
Copper Queen what?
Hospital. You've got a hospital, medical treatment right here.
I don't want to insult the wonderful folks that work at Copper Queen, but I would not exactly.
Well, Canyon Vista is any better?
Canyon Vista is better than Copper Queen.
Chairman Anthony Norrie?
Yes, sir.
This is Commander Bradshaw. I just wanted to remind the board that we currently have two jail substations, one in Wilcox and one in Sierra Vista, that are utilized for booking. And if they stay past their initial appearance, then they're moved to the current facility in Bisbee. So we have those available for our use if we want to continue that once we build a new facility.
Yes, the other question too is, you know, we just received, just now, a memo.
Well, you came last night. I didn't send it to you, but yeah, I haven't been able to see it. But even the sheriff goes that the jail where.
Without getting into that, we knew that the fix was in a year ago for Bisbee with the sheriff. Come on, come on, Kathy.
What I'm looking at, I want to build a jail tomorrow. Should have been built yesterday. Shame on all of us for letting it get this way. How are we going to best do it in the best site without just creating more and more and more cost? You're the one that's always been saying.
And that's exactly why, that's why I'm actually talking about. So the two towns with the biggest potential for growth are Douglas and Benson as the biggest potential for growth, okay? Because it's growth pattern coming out from Pima County coming out to, and it's already starting. All right, so now you're growing two municipalities that are going to be using the jail in all likelihood more, or if not.
Listen, it's so close to, you guys are going to be absorbed by Pima County.
We can't use their jail. We can't use their jail.
Well, maybe you guys could do some kind of government, ICA or MGL or whatever you call it, and you can send them over there. We've got to keep Cochise County separate from Pima County. We've got to deal with their, and this is the best way to do it.
You guys got a purity right there. Just cut a deal with them and send them over.
They're going across the line. You can't.
Well, that's the same difference.
No, because this is in the United States. It's a foreign country.
Pima County's a foreign country. I had to get a passport to, I'm a political associate of Cochise County.
Look, I think that you have to consider everyone, even though.
And that's what I'm doing. That's the point. If you look, if you look at the time, a police officer from Sierra Vista would take to bring a potential inmate to the jail and book him into the jail, the time a Benson police officer brings an inmate to the jail, the time a Wilcox police officer.
But then they're in the jail and then you've got.
The sheriff's deputies, with all due respect to the sheriff's department or sheriff's office. So I got, what's that guy's name that sits here and heals it? Yeah. So, so as regards the sheriff's office, you know, you bring them from those remote areas too, to get the deputy back out on the street, back out on patrol. There's time and aspect related to that as well. It makes, to me, more logical sense to try to centralize.
But you're also coming from, you know, I'm really a fortunate nation, grown up, right?
Sure, sure.
You can't, to me, put everything, oh, base close to Sierra Vista or Benson, because then you're putting all your economic eggs in one basket. What in the fort was to go? Because let's talk about the future.
Well, the reason to stick it closer to Tombstone, because the fort, Sierra Vista's got the fort, Douglas has the port of entry, Benson's got neighboring Pima County. Poor Tombstone and Wilcox are kind of flapping out there economically.
They're doing good. You talk, yes, they're fine. The mayor, they're like, yeah, it's okay. We don't really want to see a jail site.
I mean, another, 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 you know, what I was looking at is the Mosin Road, there's a easement already there on the far side of the fort that would allow that road to be extended up and to connect with 82 on the east side of the river. That's another great spot.
They're talking about money to build a road. I mean, we can't even get money. I mean, this is, this you're just explaining. We also have a time crunch, don't we? We have to put a jail site on the pamphlet, the, when they come, the pamphlet. We have to vote for this in November the 15th, right? And I think people need to know where they're going to put, where the jail is going to be. I don't think we can just keep on kicking the can down the road on assumptions that, like transportation and that there's so many criminal, more criminals in Sierra Vista, that we need them to build a jail because there's more criminals in Sierra Vista. I mean, that could all change. You have to look at the economy. You have to look at the cost of creating a whole new site. It's going to be huge. And we're doing it within $120 million is what we want. The max, as I understand it, to get $120 million. So when you're looking at all the things you're going to have to do at a totally new site with no infrastructure, that's going to add to your cost at least, I would say, 20 to 40 million, depending on.
Chairman? Sure, go ahead, Phil.
Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, and I just want to add something to what Supervisor Gomez mentioned. When, when looking at a site like this, if you pick a site that you have to increase not only infrastructure that is related to utilities but roadways, I have to just advise you, that is a very big time constraint. Because when you start acquiring right away from multiple property owners, and you probably experienced this in your county when you're, you're dealing on Mosin and Davis Road projects, that is a time killer. So I just, I'm sorry to interrupt on that, but I had to have to put that in. I've done multiple projects throughout my years with acquisition, and it's a time killer. But that's one thing. And then I wanted to confirm, you mentioned about transport of inmates from Sierra Vista, you know, PD, the PD transport. I think one of the advantages, and I think Mr. Bradshaw, Commander Bradshaw brought it up, was you have in Sierra Vista, a substation where your local PD is able to book people, correct, Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, sir, that is correct. There's.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that because unlike my past experience where we had PDs doing very long distance drive based on where our jail was, you at least have already pre-planted and pre-constructed several, two facilities throughout your county that then prevent that PD from driving long distances to your main jail facility. That is then done by the county at the appropriate times. So I just wanted to bring that up. But sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure I provided some of that information, especially about the infrastructure with roadways. Thank you, sir.
And I also think you have to look at the, like, I guess you guys did, an officer. I mean, I'm just looking at the memo from the sheriff, and he was talking about, I guess there was a survey done on officer and inmate safety, mental health, and the quality of life of the citizens. You know, those were the top three priorities. And I guess from that survey, this jail site where it exists was what everyone felt was the best thing. I think also, you've got 48% of the people in Douglas work here at the Bisbee jail, then at Sierra Vista. And so you have already this workforce that's situated. People made a living of it, livelihoods from it. Everyone's positioned. And now you're going to move it, you're going to have to deal with people maybe not being able, risks what? From Douglas to here is about 25 minute commute. Going to Tombstone, it's going to add another 30 minutes. That's going to add, you know, another hour both ways for people. I mean, you're going to have a total change in your workforce. That means different training. People are going to leave. You know, if you leave it where it is, you know that your workforce is there. They're trained, they're committed. They're going to have improved facility. It'll be safer for them. So that's another thing that we're not thinking about when you talk about workforce, because that's going to have to all change. And I mean, maybe that's okay for you, but I think for a lot of the people that live in Bisbee and Douglas, and I think you have, I asked for who lives where, 35 people, 46% of the staff live in Douglas. Then the next one is Sierra Vista with 21, and then Bisbee 8, Benson 1, Afrika 4, Preferred, and Palomino 6. So they're kind of already spread out there, but the basic, the most people working in the jail is from Douglas. So I would bet you, if you move it farther away, all those families are going to have to look at something else, are going to have to relocate. And maybe that's okay to some people, but here you've got people that are trained. And I just think that that's an added cost that we don't add into these kinds of things that we should think about. And then when you're just taking a time, you're doing a 17, 15 to 17-year bond. If you're going to build totally from scratch, where there's nothing out there, that's going to add to your time. That's going to add, they're going to have to renegotiate the bonds. I mean, that's going to be problematic. We're trying to have this tax being raised, get rid of it as soon as we can, build a jail so that's safe for the inmates, safe for the people working there. I just think you really, that just starting from scratch. I just think you really, that that just starting from scratch, someone else is a big mistake financially and many other ways also.
Just got, I have profound thoughts, and I'm going to refer to what I call the magic penny. And the magic penny refers to a loan provider's analysis of the loan applicant's income versus expenditure in making the determination that the loan applicant has the excess income to pay the payments on, for instance, a mortgage loan. The voter in this case is going to be the loan applicant, and they will decide what is their magic penny. Do they have the excess income to pay the other half a cent sales tax for fifteen years? If the jail tax redo in November does not pass, in my humble opinion, the current location will without question be the wisest location. Also, in my humble opinion, the significantly lower likely available funding from just under the two hundred million estimate that, uh, that the Chin, uh, people came up with, down to a hundred and twenty-ish million. That means if the jail tax redo does not pass, and we're looking at a much lower level of funding, the existing location is still the best to do the best we can with much less money. That concludes my comments.
And I I would agree with that, that would be the case if it failed, and then we have no alternative than to dump the money into the existing jail, which is not optimal, but.
But even if you win, I mean, you don't want this to go on forever, you don't want it to raise the cost because you want to start from scratch.
But you gotta, you gotta, you gotta think about potential, like, this county has had no growth, right? So what you and I are pushing is to grow economically, right? We want to grow Douglas, want to grow Benson, we want to grow Sierra Vista and poor Wilcox. I keep thinking of poor Wilcox, they're kind of like, they're kind of like out there. Yeah, yeah, but but they're, they're, they've been neglected for so long. I mean, to try to get some kind of economic growth, then they're, they're so, again, if you just look at the, the math, right? Everybody else has something, they're close to Douglas, is close to the border, Sierra Vista is close to the fort, Benson is close to I-ten and Pima County slash Tucson. So those are growth quarters, right? You got the growth from the fort, you got the growth from Pima County, poor Wilcoxes out there. There's really, there's nothing really.
Station up there, you could grow that.
No, I, I, I got you, I got you, but but if you have that, if you look at that growth pattern, you got to think of the future potential.
Building, how is building the jail in Tombstone, just that it's closer? How is that being really create any kind of growth in Wilcox?
It's not going to create growth in Wilcox, I didn't mean to imply that. What I, what I'm getting at is the, the big areas of growth are going to be clearly Douglas, Sierra Vista and Benson. Those, those are going to be because of where, back to the location, 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 right? So that's the reason that they're going to, they're going to see the growth. But still, you can't ignore, you, I can't get, I can't keep, look at that mess. We're all the way down here, and then you have the whole rest of the county. I mean, that's the.
But, but this is part of the county, just because.
Oh, it is, it is.
Doesn't mean that we become less than.
No, but but why should you overly benefit just because?
Because it, it, it's been here, we're not overly benefiting.
Because it's been here.
It, because everything is, 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 the infrastructure is there, both workforce, both, you know, the sewer water, electricity, transportation to, for families to get the visitation. Um, you know, the training, the facilities that he already has that's located at the jail, you got to remember that. He's got the fire, what is it, the fire engine, firemen, or something like that, that's huge. That would have to all be relocated, there's the college, right? That's all part of what exists. And I don't think we want to start from scratch, and I think what we want to do is build something as much, it's already exists, so you don't have the added cost, expand it, make it better, and have it at a lower, as lower cost as we can in a timely manner. And I just think when you start, starting from scratch, and all these things you're going to have to deal with, it's just going to extend the timeline really far down. And we're going to have to find more ways to, because we'll have added costs that we don't foresee. You might have an issue with water, whether the water, I mean, just like in Douglas, some of the wells have arsenic. This we know exists, it, just that you're going to have to build a water tank where that you have the, you know, I guess the gravity for the water to be able to be used in fire situations. And I just don't think this is, if you want to talk about something for Wilcox, let's talk about something that's going to bring economic development, other than just having a jail a little closer to it. I don't think that that's a reason to start from scratch, especially when you look at everything that exists where it is now. I think the jail is really eminent, we need to build it quicker than take time to, you know, it, it's just going to extend. Um, Phil, what would you say if you were to start from scratch? How many more years would this put on the timeline to have a jail ready to go?
You mean in Tombstone?
In, in any place that we're there, you have to start from scratch with all the infrastructure you need, with the sewer, with the.
But that's not necessarily the case, the infrastructure, there's infrastructure there.
Where, where is there, there's.
Where, in Tombstone?
In Tombstone, but you can't affect an old system. It's just like if you were in Rome or in, in, in Greece, you know, I mean, these, these pipes and their system is old from turn of the century. And so you want to put in and put in a whole new high-tech kind of waste and sewer into their old existing pipes. You're going to have to redo pipes, you're going to have to.
Well, we would have to run pipe anyways, you're going to have to run pipe.
We don't have to do it here at the jail, we don't have to do all that.
You still have to run sewer pipes, sewer lines, maybe not as far.
Of course not, and it's not going to take all these things, I mean, gases there, you know, you don't have to buy the land. Freeport, if you'd be extended to that, they might be said.
You, you, the only place you don't have to buy the land is.
Is where it's at.
Yeah, and the, the landscape, the excavating cost for that is going to be.
There's a level side, you know, you go down for the next level, Freeport owns that.
For the, the size of the proposed building that we're looking at building?
They have Freeport owns a lot of that land, they're never going to mine there. They've already said they'll lease it, they'll give it to us for, you know, or they give it to the jail, the sheriff, whatever, with his, his, you know, ability to speak with them, I think they've already had a conversation.
I would like to sit down with Phil and two or three engineers or an architect and have this discussion about establishing the requirements, and then doing a cost benefit analysis for the infrastructure costs related per square footage of whatever it would cost to build this jail, and have that before I start making decisions on where I'm sticking this jail.
And what's that going to take?
Chairman, uh, I'll try to answer the.
We could do it a couple of weeks, I, I could, I could probably knock it out. I get, I do proposals in less than thirty days, so I could tell you, we'd want to do it.
Yeah, we're talking about private industry, you're not talking about government.
Well, I'm talking about private industry, I'm talking about guys that build things, which are private guys. Government doesn't necessarily build it. We have to do it anyways, we have to bring, we have to bring architects, architects in and construction companies in that are going to bid on this any.
I think that the voters need to know where the jail site is going to be when they vote.
But they can look at the site, and they could tell you approximately what it's going to cost to prep the site and add that in when they build their biz.
All, we, we have to admit that building from a new site in Tombstone, which is where I think you want your, your.
New, but it does, it's a new site, if you build it right there, it's a new site. So we, so where are you going to build it over there, you're going to build?
Jail where it's.
It's a new site.
It's not, well, it's all there.
Unless you're going to knock down the jail, put all the inmates in a camper and park them out on the highway while you build the jail in the old site, you're building a new site.
The cost is so much less where it's.
What are you basing that on, what are you basing?
Chair, chair, I'll, I'll try to provide some, some clarification for that if you want. So you, you asked about two things, and I want to just clarify that. And I'm sorry I wasn't able to be present in person today, I have something going on tonight that I have to be over at the airport. Um, the, the fact of the matter is, one of the things I look at from, you mentioned utilities. Yes, there's a time component during construction, but the biggest issue, when you're looking at the existing Bisbee site in comparison, let's just use Tombstone as an example. Utilities for those two sites in comparisons were estimated at two million for the Bisbee existing site and fourteen to fifteen million for the Tombstone site. So those are the magnitudes when you talk about costs. And then, you know, even the Sierra Vista was at seven million. So then the next thing that you ask, so that's, when you talk about like the delays from utilities, what that does is it increases your construction activity. But more importantly, what I look at from a time component is acquisition of property. That is, that is a time constraint. You asked about what might delay or cause delays in your property, sorry, in your project. When you start acquiring especially private property, you, you go into issues of, one, going through appraisal processes, hopefully having willing sellers, and the activities of possibly entertaining eminent domain, which is a very, um, lengthy, uh, controversial process sometimes. So I, I wanted to make sure you, when you said about time.
Nobody, nobody's talking about you in eminent domain, though.
I, I know, but, but then that, that then kills your time also if you don't have a willing buyer for a site that you purchased. So I just, or you're wanting to purchase. When Supervisor Gomez asked the question about delays, I wanted to make sure I answered that from the standpoint of if you pick a site that you have to purchase property or try to acquire even through state land, that is a time increase, so that, I just wanted to make sure I answered that, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. I just, you know, again, I just see what we, we've spoken about, what we want to do, which is do it as quickly as we can, as most efficiently and effectively for the voter, for the taxpayer and the cost that will incur. And I just don't understand why we want to start somewhere else when that is our goal. Our goal is to do it as quickly as we can, as efficiently and cost effectively. And within this, the, the terms that we've already set, and we spoke with the bonds guys. So to me, this is the only, the best solution. Everything's there, from workforce, infrastructure, to utility, infrastructure, to not having to spend that much money on building anything else except what's needed at site. Um, safety, you know, transportation. And I know you're talking about the cost, you're thinking that's the cost of where all the criminals are in Sierra Vista, having all this criminal activity, the cost of bringing them to Bisbee. I just don't, I just don't think that that one element is the reason why to start from scratch. So I don't.
You're using the term starting from scratch.
With nothing there.
No, there, there is something, I'll tell you what, I need, if you guys can get for me, all the utility site maps for Tombstone. And then I need all the utility site maps for Bisbee. And I'm going to tell you, they're not much different, they're not much different, you know?
Yes, it.
It could be, it could be the difference of a few miles, but that's.
But whether it's close or not, the issue is can that Tombstone, their sewer, their, their infrastructure, take the added weight of connecting a brand new cell to their system? I don't believe it can, it's going to cause a lot more problems in what they have because it's very limited to what they probably are at their, what is, what would are the terms I would use? They're, they're at their highest amount of being able to deal with what they have, which is twelve hundred people. Now you, what would a jail, you're just going to add to their cost of being able to do and provide services to their community. And I just don't think that's right, and we haven't even talked to them about it. Tombstone may, you know, Tombstone may say, hey, I don't want a prison being seen from our historical town that people come all over the world, you know, to visit. So we haven't talked to them about that. You know, we know the Bisbee people, we know that they're lively, livelihoods.
They want it.
They want it, they want it to stay here, the sheriff's department wants it. Why do we want to go against all this different communities? I, I just don't see that, that there's a, a good basis for doing that. And especially, like I said, Tombstone, from when I've talked to them, they're not crazy about it. Yeah, maybe one or two jobs, but they would rather not.
Well, Chairman, I could talk to county administration, and we could come back with what we've already heard here.
Who's, who's your, who's your guy that you use to build the, the estimates basically for site, just the site? Right, the landscaping or the, the excavation that's required to prep a site, the utility access? You know, who is that guy?
So to answer the question, um, DLR was scoped within the Chin planning study to do estimates during the planning projects. We don't have anybody under contract right now, but it was DLR, and they had a private engineer that helped and, and compiled the estimates that were part of those six sites. If the, uh, desire of the board is to do additional work, I would recommend that work be composed probably within a new professional, because you're going to be moving forward as you go through, whether it's with an owner's rep or your architect for design, that's where you would do that kind of work.
So can we, when, when are we going to have the meeting to talk about the owner's rep, bringing the owner's rep in and putting the owner's rep on contract? It's coming up, right?
That's July twenty-second.
Oh, that's a long.
No, July twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Sorry, twenty-third.
I think we should just put on the agenda to create the, the current jail site for the new jail.
Next to the old one?
Well, the current site, yeah, you can just open next to it. You, I mean, look, you got so many pros for keeping it there, and when you look at the cons, the list is very minimal compared to like, I even got more, you know, this is just two sheets of pros right there. And I got more over here, I mean, I just don't think there's a good enough reason. When I think about the taxpayer, I, and you know, our whole thing is we want less taxes, not more. We don't want this to continue and become more and more expensive. And I think you're just entering in, in the field when you're looking at utilities and roads and transportation and, 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 you know, a whole different workforce having to readjust itself. And if you don't even want to discuss the historical loss that Bisbee will have, I mean, they still are a part of the county, their, you know, community has dwindled, but it's very historical. It's what made Cochise County what they are. You know, I just think that all those things, when you consider that, I just can't see the couple of cons, whether it's the transportation of criminals from Sierra Vista, because it's far away, outweighs all that other, all the other stuff that we've been talking about.
Boy, you've got good lobbyists that have worked on you, I got to hand it to us.
He's honor drunk.
I got to hand it to them, they did a good job prepping you, Ms. Gomez, I'll tell you.
Well, it continues on.
Good for you, good for you.
So, you know, plus we want to do what's best with Cochise County, we don't want to, right?
Again, that's, I'm looking at the, I'm trying to look forward, right? I'm trying to, I'm trying to think, you know.
And yet, what if, what if we say the same, right, what if it stays the same? I mean, I think it's just too much of a shift based on very few cons, when like I said, just the whole history, the whole workforce, what we are. I think that there's better ways to bring Wilcox in through economic development. And we've talked about some of those things in one ninety-one that we can do. Um, but this way, you know, Bisbee keeps what it has. It, it, um, and then the rest of us grow and work within that site. Plus, the sheriff is in favor of that, I mean, I think that we have to consider what his people want also, even though we may think we may know better, or we may think down the future we may know better. And I just think that that's, that's part of it too, we have to consider that.
I say we wait, get a buyer's agent on contract, and then actually do site plan and CBAs based on site plans.
But isn't that what the study was, didn't he give us the two best sites?
The study was geared for a desired outcome from the beginning, in my humble opinion.
Well, I don't think so, I think they were looking at a lot of other places, you've been looking at Benson.
I think it was, I think there was a predetermined already going into, there was already a built-in bias that was, was built into the direct, not, I'm not talking about Phil, Phil, don't take it this way. I'm talking about the direction that you were provided, you were provided to have the built-in bias. You did, you did a good job, so did Chin, I'm just saying that there was a pre sort of influenced sort of direction.
If I really wanted to be, you know, uh, divisional, I would say, hey, Douglas, Douglas is where you should have it. But that is far away. And, and so I give, you know, I don't even think of that, I say because I realize that I have to represent the whole county, that Douglas is out immediately, even though it would be great.
But using that logic, the best place to put this then, if you want the utilities to the most modern, with the traffic and the provision, that, that'd be put it in Sierra Vista. No, I know, I know, but I'm.
And, and so, Ken, you can't put everything in this one basket, where Sierra Vista or that corner up to Benson is where we're going to do everything, you just can't do that because it ruins the whole county, I mean, you haven't even looked at that kind of part of it. So I don't know why we're kicking, kicking it down the, the trail here, I think we should at least have a vote. We should hear from people, the community, you know, why the law. We should hear from people, the community, you know, why they want it. And so we put it on the, um, put an agenda for a vote. At least the people will be able to come and tell us why they feel, and let's see if Sierra Vista shows up, right? Or if it's huge, there's eight hundred people from Tombstone to say, yeah, we want the jail here. That's something considerable. I didn't tell you that's not gonna happen. So, um, that's what I, I don't know how we do that because we've never done that.
You wanna do like we did with the Wolf thing and just have a, a meeting to discuss? Get public input for location with the jail?
I'm just thinking of, yeah, we, I know. I mean, we could do that, uh, to get public input. We could, um,
Have it on a regular board of supervisors.
Have it on a regular board of supervisors called public, you know?
Yeah, I just hate doing those things at ten o'clock in the morning because people that work can't make it to those meetings.
Yeah, board of supervisors mean that day later, telling, do we have to have it at ten?
We could have a special meeting just on this one subject.
Who, who was the last meeting with? Was that only the jail employees?
The last meeting.
Yeah, there, there was some meeting, uh, so-called stakeholders. Did the jail employees have a meeting about where they want the jail in this high school? Lieutenant? Nope? Okay. I'm mistaken. I thought there was a-
No, we have the, the technical advisory committee. Is that the, with the Chin planning study and, uh?
Okay, so did they, they, did they interview jail employees?
For the Chin planning study. And Phil, can you answer that question?
This Commander Bradshaw.
Chairman, members of the board, during discussion with staff, I will say there was a desire to keep it in its current location. I can tell you that. I interviewed management staff as well as personnel within the jail.
Uh, about how many people estimate?
I would say at least over a dozen because of, Karen Chin and I, uh, spent many, many days interviewing multiple people throughout, uh, the jail system. And one of the things, um, the discussions I did bring up throughout is, is their, their idea about the, the current site. And, and I'll tell you why I asked that of the jail personnel and, and management team is because typically when I worked on projects, whether roadways or, or buildings, um, buil-, building it in its current location, um, provides a quicker, easier, cost-effective, unless there's a real reason to move it. Um, I'm not being biased. I'm just saying that that's the way I look at it. And I wanted to get their feeling as we were interviewing them over those months that we did the initial gathering of information. But I can tell you that in my experience in discussions with them, there was a desire to keep it in Bisbee at the current location.
So-
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Borgone, did, did residents of other places in the county have an opportunity to talk to you about where they would like the jail besides the employees?
N- no, I, I couldn't say that. No, sir.
Thank you.
So can I ask, is, uh, Commander Bradshaw online?
Yes, he's up there.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, when you were in this memo, you referred to the officer and inmate safety, mental health. Well, I'm sorry, it was a survey conducted, uh, prior to the last jail district election. And it's the top priorities were officers and inmate safety, mental health, and the quality of life of the citizens, right? And so from that survey, I think, should I read this paragraph? Um, that, that is why you wanted to have it on the jail site that it, where it is. Is that correct? Can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure. So, so before we approached the whole idea of a jail district the first time, um, we hired a company to do a survey as to what the voters, wh- where was there an appetite for having a new facility? Um, and they did the survey and there was, it was, it was huge. And county administration is the one that, that, that called for it. And I'm sure they have a record for it, of it. And, um, those were the top priorities of the voters at the time, um, as to reasons to build a new facility.
And so can you just explain what the survey, you know, what came in this survey then?
That, that if we had, yeah, go ahead. So that if we, if we, um, i- if we went ahead with an election, that the majority of people said that absolutely we should have a new jail and these are the reasons why. And those are like the top three that they ranked during that survey.
I do have that survey. Um, it was a, uh, we contracted with someone to conduct a own survey across the county prior to engaging in the jail district.
So, so we're, we're satisfied that that was a relatively scientific survey randomly and all that kind of stuff?
It's a good one now.
Okay, that's all right.
And I, I can't think of the name of the company that, that did it, but they're very, very reputable. They do exit polls and all kinds of things for elections and, and they're very reputable throughout Arizona.
I would, I would presume that nothing has changed as far as how those people might see the, the location now versus whenever that survey was done. I, I don't have any reason to think that, that the results would be significantly different.
Me too.
And so from that survey and what came out of it, having the jail existing where it is, is what you feel you got from that survey, I guess. I'm trying to find the right words to state that.
No, and, and those shouldn't be necessarily joined together. Um, so what we got from the survey were those were their priorities. And then, uh, that was another part of it was, you know, what was the location and, and things like that. But the location wasn't a priority. The priority was safety, mental health, um, quality of life.
Okay, so there were-
So those aren't really, those weren't tied together. Nobody asked, where do you think we should build the jail? They were just asking, should we build a new jail?
So where was not a topic?
No, sir.
Too bad.
That's too bad. So the jail, though, because of all these, the survey and because of the, the three issues that came about, having to build one as soon as possible is what came out of that survey. Because of the safety issues, the medical, um, health and the quality of life for not only the inmates but the citizens. And so building a jail, how quickly you can build that jail, how efficiently and cost-effective is I think part of the reason why to, to choose that the jail goes where it's existing and you just add on to it.
Okay. And since I'm, and since I'm on still, I just wanna clarify for, for Chairman Astronori, there was, there was never any pre-designation through the sheriff's office or anything that, look, you know what, we need to give direction to whoever we hire.
I'm privy to a discussion between the mayor and the sheriff regarding the topic well before any of this went down. So I, I've, I'm aware of things that were going back and forth that weren't done, quote unquote, in the, in the public.
And I, I, I know of the discussion that I think that you're talking about. And, and obviously the mayor of Bisbee, I think, who is also on this meeting, um, watching, um, is very, um, desired to have that. I mean, when we do the census, the census is part of Bisbee. Obviously, you know, they want it there. We're incorporated into the Bisbee. We use their sewer, we use their water. Um, yeah, so obviously they benefit.
No, I, I get it. But that, that discussion included that the jail will be in Bisbee. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay. I would just respectfully disagree.
That's my seat.
I was privy to-
That discussion was made.
They're not, they're not lobbying, making-
No, I'm saying that that discussion was made with, oh yeah, don't worry, the jail's gonna be in Bisbee.
Say that I was a privy day in conversations that anyone had on anything. I'm just approaching this as someone selected who's trying to do the best-
No, I get, I, I get it. You're making your points. I got it. I got it.
Well, I have to reiterate him as you reiterate your points.
I'm trying.
More than my points are well taken. And, and I'm there for the record that I think that we have to move forward on what's best for our community. I mean, thank you, all these, except for some of the sites you're talking about, Sierra Vista or District Two. But even with that, looking at District Two, I have to see what's best. And I think, and I feel strongly, I also, I think, I know that this jail, to do what we wanna do, cost-effectively, create a good environment, which we're responsible for all these inmates, right? And right now, the jail is terrible. And so we need to do the right thing. And I think this is the right thing for the taxpayer, for the sheriff department, for the citizens.
All right, well, I mean, I, I think we should do what you had suggested and get public input. Just have, have a, an event where we can do kinda like we did, where it runs between five and seven o'clock one night in the next week or two to just have that discussion. And see what, see what comes in. Yep. Are you okay with the, putting it for a, a me, a special meeting?
That's fine.
All right. Well, that's what we'll do then.
So everyone-
It's public input. Now, now it's, yeah.
It's part of the meeting, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And have your voices heard because otherwise the obvious mean I have it. So it's very important.
All right.
People turn out.
All right.
So, uh, if this is a special meeting then?
Yeah, this was just a work session. We can't vote on anything here, so we can set it up for that.
And then when would we be able to put it on the agenda to vote?
We could do it that same night.
That same night?
Yeah, we could do that.
Say we're gonna put it on the agenda to vote.
What we can do is we can have a public comment period and then we could do a work session. No, no, we could probably, you could just vote. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yep. Cause it'll be a special meeting, so we'd be allowed to vote.
All right, let's just do that.
Yodokie.
You can marshal your forces.
I will. I'll obtain that, my ability to do that, yes.
All right. All right.
And so we'll know a date by when I'll leave you with the clerk and we can do.
Let me know.
All right. We'll definitely let you know.
Next day, if you decide that night, text me that right.
Okay.
Every hour counts. I'm trying to create faster activities.
All right. So any, are we good? Any other discussion before we adjourn? Sharon's got the direction to coordinate a time for doing it.
It's in the middle of this right now, I'm seeing.
He's just smiling. Look at the grin on his face. That's the-
We've got a lot to say on them.
So, uh, all right, so, uh, but that, um, we will adjourn.
Okay.
And then, uh, oh, should I read the next meeting? It's going to be, uh, what did I do with it? Uh, work sessions. No, that's this one. That's, that's Duncan. So here, hang on, hang on, hang on. Oh, here it is. I got it, I got it. All right. So the next meeting will be on Tuesday, July eighth for a light improvement district meeting. Where did, where did that come from? And then, uh, it'll be at ten AM to approve the minutes and the final budget for the light improvement district.
And all the other budgets.
All right. Oh, and, oh, is it all the other budgets?
County budget.
Oh, and adopt the final budget for the county? Oh, so that is an important meeting. Okay, so right, great. Well, I guess we'll see-
Do you have a, a chance to admit that budget?
Just not up.
Just not up, yeah. All right. So I guess we'll see everybody, uh, July eighth at ten AM. So we're adjourned.